Three in a row.
We're off mute.
Ready to go live.
He's just saying that as I mean. I've got to the agenda. Yeah, I've got extra.
No, she cannot come.
No. Call this meeting to order of the Oak Hill City Council for March thirteenth, twenty twenty three. The clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Daniel Wright.
Here.
Council at Large Tom Oxley. Ward one council members Diana Genie.
Here.
Krista Hodges.
Here.
David Perry.
Here.
Ward two council members Stephen Hazlett.
Here.
Charles Smallwood Junior.
Here.
And Benitez Jackson.
Here.
You have a forum, sir.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be offered by Father Joseph, pastor of Saint Peter and Paul Catholic Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Smallwood.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. We stand before you, almighty God, conscious of our sinfulness, but aware that we gather in your name. Come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our hearts. Give us light and strength to know your will to make it our own and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power. For you are God, sharing the glory of father and son. You desire justice for all, enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love so that all our discussions and reflections may be pleasing to you and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. We ask this of you who live and reign with the Father and the Son, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Without objection, I'm reordering the agenda. I want to move item number five down to go along with number eleven. Discuss them together since they do overlap. Number five be moved down next to number eleven. All right. Is there a motion regarding the reading and approval of the minutes?
May I move we accept the approval of the minutes as having been presented?
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Properly moved and seconded, the minutes be accepted as presented. Any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six zero. The treasurer's report is our motion regarding it.
May I move we accept the treasurer's report as having been presented and note that there is a surplus, not a surplus, but a addition or amount beyond what was projected. Is that correct, Madam? City manager, if I looked at the numbers correct.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd like that to be added to the minutes or the motion.
I'll say. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to. Any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Citizens' comments? Don Williams? All right. Megan Elmore?
Count. Counsel, I would like to ask that this be taken into executive session.
May I make a motion?
About to speak about.
Make a motion that council go into executive session because this may be matters of
Personnel.
Personnel and should be conducted as such.
Is there a second? Properly moved and seconded that this council go into executive session regarding the comments Ms. Elmore may make, which may be a personnel issue. Any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Go into executive session.
Mayor, I move that we return to session. I would also note that we made no decisions, took no votes. And I move that we return back to regular session.
Mr. Second?
I'll say.
Property movement second, returning to regular session. We'll vote the motion, I mean, any discussion, all right, we'll vote the motion, all those in favor, stick up, saying ah.
Ah.
Those opposed, no, the motion is agreed to. Mr. Alshire?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to speak just a few moments. I think really maybe address the attorney with this, what I've got to speak of tonight. Of course, y'all got to hand out the scene about the outline of the meeting, where they want the meetings to go. We've got this last month, and I was kind of concerned about it because I went through the charters and some of the things in the city, came to the city. And correct me if I'm wrong, because you know, a lot of times I am wrong. But I don't know if this had ever been adopted by the council to go, but whether maybe needed to be adopted, I don't know. But one of the things that concerned me was number three, personalized comments. And I agree with the latter part of that one about the language unacceptable. But give me an understanding of what the city council doesn't want us to do as we speak. Do you not want us to call the council members by addressing by their names? Or address them by a council member, gentleman from Ward one or Ward two, or councilwoman from Ward one or Ward two? It seems as, you know, and honestly, I talked with the Ethics Committee on this. And they agreed that, you know, about calling by names, you know, it's a, wouldn't be a violation if you did hold us from calling you by name. But then again, he also said that what we enter into there is suppressing our constitutional right and First Amendment. I don't like to be, you know, I agree with y'all, have laws, bylaws, everything go by, but. But when you try to tell me that I'm not allowed to say something or suppress what, you know, something that's going on in the agenda, I don't think that's right. And as we vote for each member of council person, I don't understand what the big problem is that to address. I'll use Benitez for an example, is Councilman Benitez, Mr. Jackson. If he and I disagree with something, then I don't see what the problem is with me saying, you know, I spoke with Mr. Jackson, we disagree, but this is the way I feel about it. Once again, you know, they feel that that may be suppressing our constitutional right, Mr. Attorney. You know, you can look into it, but that's one of the things that I just wanted to speak on tonight. I think we as people, voting citizens of Oak Hill, have the right to have different opinions from you, different everyone, yeah, we just. Our opinion may be different from you, but we still should have the right to express. If Mrs. Janey and I have a disagreement about something, I think I should have the right because the citizens out here in Oak Hill don't. They don't know who I'm referring to. And if I was having a difference with Sister, the Councilman Janey. I'm not saying that she didn't do this, I'm not implying that, but she could go out and tell, when somebody asks her, Ms. Janey, I see where Mr. Alshires, there's kind of a conflict there. Oh, no, no, he's not referring about me, he's referring to someone else, you know, some other lady council person. And I just don't think that's right, I think if we have a disagreement, it ought to be. It'd be addressed to whomever. Because, you know, we trust you with leading the city, guiding the city, doing what's best for the city and the future of the city. And so like I say, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if this has never been tabled, I mean, adopted. I mean, it's, it's some, I don't know how many rules been in place, but, and I may be wrong, like I said, I may be wrong, if I am, I apologize. But I just want to make sure if that's one of the things that the council needs to look at to adopt this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Tannabas?
Good evening. I was going to speak about the charter amendments, but I understand that it might not be voted on this evening, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I was just going to voice my opposition to section 11 and 12, but I'll be here next month then. Thank you.
Well, you can go ahead and express your opposition if you want to now.
Well, I'll take my two and a half minutes left. I just, I expressed it the other day to you all, and I don't agree with it, just those two sections of the charter proposed amendment. And I think it takes authority away from the city manager, the city manager needs. And so I really appreciate your consideration to abandon those two sections of the proposed charter amendment. So, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Ayers?
Hi, y'all. I just want to speak, I don't know how many of y'all are aware that we had a big fight, no kill. September 4th, at the Oak Hill Gymnasium. Shawn Lockery won WBF heavyweight title. I had not heard a word about it from anybody in the town. I just think when, I mean, police department did have officers there to patrol it, there were sheriff's departments there. I just think when we have this event next year, it's going to be an annual thing, this is the third one, that the city needs to get behind it. And support a local fighter like that. I mean, we support a lot of other things. I just didn't know how many people were aware that this fight even happened. That's all I got for.
Mr. Ayers, what was his name?
Shawn Lockery.
How you spell that?
I'm not sure, his wife owns Black Bear Bakery.
Did you say Dockery or Lockery?
Last, last year, he won the West Virginia heavyweight title in Oak Hill Gymnasium, this is a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
And this year, when he was defending it, he fought for a world title.
No, I never heard about that.
No, nobody's heard about it, and I just think there should be some acknowledgement, that's a big deal for Oak Hill. To have a big fight like that, I mean, that's an international title.
I agree with you, it should.
Well, if, I don't know, well, it was posted everywhere on Facebook and everywhere else, because it was a fundraiser for the softball team.
Correct, the money went to the softball team, and the other went towards Steve Neil, Signal 12 game, youth boxing program. Which is going to be moving from out Gatewood, right here on the main street, no kill.
Right, I mean, it was been published, it was published off of months.
Yeah, but no news media, no.
Oh, that's only Steve.
No, no signage, no nothing, you talk to 90% of the, I talked to Mr. Alshire, who actually was a boxer, he wasn't even aware the fight happened.
So did I.
It was totally standing room only. So, I just think we need to acknowledge it and maybe do something about it.
Yes, sir, thank you. A minute, under minutes regarding the city council records, I have a couple tonight. On June the 7th, 1937, from the city council minutes. Upon motion duly seconded, the following building permits were granted, RR Thomas directed theater building on Main Street adjoining the Rhodes Restaurant. I think that Mr. Richardson would be Oak Hill Theater, wouldn't it? Yep, well, 1937, Mr. Thomas asking the city to give him a permit to build the Oak Hill Theater. On July the 5th, 1937, the street committee was instructed to put up some sort of a safety railing at the.
I'm sorry.
My time up? That was a minute for the man. The street committee was instructed to put up some sort of safety railing at the Mahood property opposite the Lyric Theater. And the other place that the sidewalk is to be built on a high wall, and in their opinion is dangerous to persons using said walk or walks. There's that Lyric Theater. That was the old name for the Mayfair Theater, they changed its name in 1937 from Lyric to Mayfair, so that's what they're talking about here, the Lyric. And upon motion duly seconded that same day, the council agreed to pay for a five-foot concrete sidewalk in front of the Oak Hill post office. Using WPA labor, and the city would pay for the materials, the Works Progress Administration, a Roosevelt program, and the New Deal. They're going to use some of that money from the WPA to do the labor, put the sidewalk in front of the post office, and Oak Hill will pay for the concrete, I guess. So that was in 1937. All right. Finished business, a city park update by the Thrasher Group, and approval of funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've been instructed that I have five minutes. So we're going to go through this as efficiently as we possibly can. I've been before this council several times regarding this project, and we're at the point now where we are completing. Our initial planning process that we've gone through and looking at moving into phase one of construction for the city park renovations. We have been meeting as a steering committee several times, which, which was a group that was appointed by this council to help kind of steer and guide the master planning efforts for this park project. And what we have kind of come up with is an overall plan of improvements that will extend beyond just the initial phase of construction. But what I'm here tonight, it's kind of on behalf of that steering committee, is to make a request of city council to officially dedicate. Funding that was previously allocated or set aside for this project, but no official request of financial amount was ever made. So what we are looking at is around a $1.7 million project for phase one, which includes construction contingencies for construction as well as design engineering fees. The scope of work that would be included in that part of the project and the attachment that I just gave everyone, there's, there's a narrative scope of work, there's the plan that is present on the screen behind you. And then there's a line item cost estimate for where we're kind of getting these numbers. So the scope of work will include improvements to the baseball fields, which will involve rotating one of the existing fields so that all of the home plates kind of face the same direction. Where we would create a centralized concession stand restroom building, which would be an upgrade to the existing facilities that are there now. Up above on the second story of that centralized building would be a press box, which would have view sheds available to the three fields that are present. And I should also disclaim, all of these improvements that are being proposed will take place on City of Oak Hill property, we're not currently proposing anything in phase one. Would be on Lewis Community Foundation property, although there are things identified as part of the overall master plan, which, which we will try to focus on in future phases, once agreements have been made with that foundation. In addition to the baseball improvements I've already mentioned, we'll be looking at doing all new backstops and fencing and dugouts at each of the existing fields on city park property. And also included in the, in the budget currently are bleachers. A new concrete skate park, which will be located in the existing parking lot area where the Trailhead restroom building is located. That's about a 14,000 square foot area, and this would be a constructed environment skate park, you know, precast concrete, ramps, bowls, different rail features that would be included in this. Not, not like the parks you may have seen that are just kind of prefab features that are sitting on a flat concrete pad, this will have some, you know, undulations and design into the park itself. We're going to be focusing on the, you know, a lot of the existing playground equipment that's there now is in working order, there are some drainage improvements and general access to the park, the playground areas that need to be focused on. So we'll be spending some of the funding towards that in this phase. We'll be doing a full-size basketball court with two goals, with the ability to expand to more goals on the sides in the future. And then just general items that are included in the budget, there'll be sidewalks to connect Park Drive to certain areas of the park, drainage improvements. Contractor mobilization and stakeouts, you know, when they first get on site, bringing their equipment to the site, laying out exactly where everything's going to go. Erosion and sediment control, there will be over an acre of disturbance, we will need a West Virginia DP construction stormwater permit for this project. And then some of the demolition that is, that is associated with the project as well. The budget that I have outlined in, on the third page here, you will see amounts to approximately $2 million, which is, which is higher than the funding request that we're putting in front of you. We are working with the city to identify what pieces of this scope of work can be done internally, such as installing water and sewer lines and taps. I think there's some fair amount of the demolition work that could also be done by, by city staff with some direction and guidance from us. So what our plan is, is to make the, the budget for the city park for phase one, $1.7 million, 1.6 of that would be focused on parks and recreation amenities. $100,000 of that would go towards sidewalks and stormwater drainage, tapping into another area of funding that was set aside as part of the ARPA funds previously. And then where we would, would kind of be looking to potentially have some savings is, you know, these are estimates, these are engineers' estimates, until we put this thing out to bid, we really. You know, we don't know exactly what different things are going to cost, it's going to depend on what's going on in the market, contractor availability, how hungry somebody might be to want to do this job. So there are things that may be cheaper, there are things that may be more expensive than what we currently have on this estimate. So what our plan would be is to put this package out to bid with a series of deductive alternates, so things that if pricing comes in a little bit higher than we would have anticipated, we have the ability to remove things from the contract without having to rebid the project. An example might be there's a section of that basketball court where we want to put up a 10-foot fence to prevent the ball from going into the parking area or the road. We may do that as an alternate for now, and be able to potentially save some money. As part of rotating this existing field, we are going to have to relocate some of the existing light poles. Basically, there are, there are seven light poles that are on this field now, we're going to have to reset at least five of them and relocate the fixtures, so, you know. There is a cost associated with that in this budget, and so basically, you know, what the request is, that's a high-level overview of what phase one is. Phase two would involve some future work with realigning Park Drive and adding some additional parking off of Park Drive. The road alignment would actually shift more towards the rail trail and excavate out some of that bank. The rail tracks in that area would ultimately be removed to allow this excavation to happen, and then you would end up with a two-way road on Park Drive running the distance of the park. With perpendicular parking spaces located off of that. And some other things that we would factor in, some traffic calming measures, potentially things like speed humps or just, you know, different, you know, other types of traffic calming measures. So that would, that would be involved in a future part of the work, we also think that's an area where. We also think that's an area where, uh, the city could do some of that with public work staff, some of the excavation work and possibly even wrap the paving of that road into a future paving budget, uh, in another fiscal year. So that, that is kind of an overview of the work that we've, we've done and the idea we have for phase one construction. Um, and as I, as I said, the, the request of, of this, this body tonight is that, that you all allocate the one-point-seven million dollars, uh, to the phase one uh, of construction of this project. Um, a- as far as our, our own, our own, uh, involvement in the project and moving forward, you know, we were, we were basically looking at a eight percent of construction, which is a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, typically, we're, we're at ten to twelve percent. Um, you all have already allocated some money towards survey and the planning work that we've completed to date. So we're at more of a point where we're ready to launch into final design. So we're knocking that, that down even another couple percent. But that would include everything for our final design permitting, bidding of the project, construction administration, which will include inspection, uh, managing the contractor, make sure everything's being built to plans and specs, uh, as well as approving or processing pay orders or, or pay applications, change orders, so on and so forth. So the, kind of the final, final request of this group is to authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with the Thrasher Group for the next phase of design, as well as the overall project budget of, of one-point-seven million dollars. Any questions?
I have, I have a question. Will you, will, will you eventually have to, uh, um, seek some permission from the Methodist Church on the, on, on the next phase for some of their property?
Yeah, so there's, there's an overall plan that would expand beyond what we're showing now. We want to redo the, the field that's on their property. There's some other parking improvements we'd like to make. Um, we need to identify exactly what we want that to be and then go to them with a formal request, as well as request a longer lease term rate. Right now it's annual and, um, city manager and I had talked that it's ill-advised for the city to make any investment into property that they don't have a long-term lease on or, or own. Um, so we did not feel that i- in, in the interest of moving forward with phase one, that we didn't want to do anything on, on their property at this time. We wanted to get a project started and, and get this, this thing underway.
And we think that by phasing the projects like we have, that'll give the Methodist Church ample time to go through the avenues that they have to go through to give us the permission to do what we need to do.
Have they been, Dan, in common at all?
Other than just the fact that they do, it takes a while to go through all the routes that they have to go through.
And we allocated, how much ARPA funding did we allocate to this project?
We have no record of anything being allocated. So, um, the one-point-seven is about half of the ARPA money. The other was for drainage and sidewalks. That was what council picked for ARPA money. So in lieu of having projects, um, already ready to go for that, that I just took half a million. I mean, half the money.
So how much do we have left at the ARPA funds?
One-point-seven.
One-point-seven, yeah.
And some of that will has already, I mean, some of this is sidewalks and drainage. So I had given Sam one-point-six million and then we added the sidewalks and drainage piece to that also.
Okay.
I had a call from a constituent last week. She said she was representing several senior citizens and she's been following this. And she wanted to know what would it be there for people who can't play tennis or basketball or baseball? Uh, she, she talked in particular about shuffleboard and picnic pavilions. Is, is anything like that being proposed for people who aren't as spry as everyone else to, uh?
So a couple of things that would maybe fall in that category. We, we are going to be able to, in working with the Little League and, and kind of their use of this facility, we are gonna be able to eliminate the existing T-ball field. So we are proposing that that be a location for a future picnic shelter. It, it's not part of the funding for this, this phase one, um, but in addition to that, trying to make other connections and walking paths so that you would have more of a designated loop to walk around the park, um, just more of a, you know, exercise opportunity. I, I think that there, there's, there's a lot of things that we've talked about in this planning process, like a splash pad, pickleball courts, um, that we just don't have the room for in city parks. So it's, it's my professional advice that the city should at some point evaluate their park system, what the community is interested in and what other improvements need to happen in across the citywide park systems, not just city park. I think that that's a, that's an effort in of itself and, you know, feedback from, from the person you spoke to would, would be prevalent in a community-wide survey, if you wanted to do that, about what people are looking for, what they're interested in seeing. And I think you all have a lot of park property that's maybe o- opportunity for some of those other improvements.
Thank you.
I think the only other last thing I'll, I'll mention is we, we are gonna continue to work, uh, with, with the city on identifying grant funding for additional phases of, of construction. Uh, the playground equipment and improvements specifically, we think is eligible for Land and Water Conservation Fund, which will have likely an application cycle opening this summer. So, um, we, you know, we want to continue to help you all find additional ways to pay for some of these improvements.
That was one of my questions I was gonna ask. Is there any funding available?
There is. So that's one, uh, community development block grant also has a, a small bucket that would pay for recreational projects, um, congressional-directed spending requests. There, there are a number of different things that we could, you know, evaluate and advise the city to apply for. Overall, this is probably about a three-million-dollar-plus project with everything we want to do. It's just trying to figure out what can we do to get this started and, and this particular phase of the work.
Thank you, Sam.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The one-point-seven would do all that you've talked about, which includes monies from ARPA, correct?
Yes.
At, could through Mr. Kirk's assistance, uh, some of this one could, would it be possible that perhaps maybe could one-point-seven be reduced some more if there's some things that, that the city could do?
Yes, and I think to, to, to my point about the line item estimate, it's actually hovering around two right now. I think there's a lot of things like the water and sewer installation. Those, those are bid prices. We can reduce that pretty significantly by doing some of that work internally. And I, I think that that's what I've got to work with Mr. Kirk on is, you know, what can the city do themselves and what do we need to bid out to a contractor?
Let me, let me, you're satisfied with the one-point-seven, correct?
Yes.
And that's your recommendation?
Yes.
I would also say this, like to say this, as already has been said, this council at some point prioritized park, uh, sidewalks and, and drainage. Which then, having said that, I would also like to acknowledge that the discussions and a lot of this begun under city manager Hannah Bass. Well, with this, uh, city manager Johnson as well. And Sam, you've done an excellent job. Uh, we had one, uh, party meeting, which went well. And then after that, you had a meeting with the steering committee and I would commend the steering committee and how you facilitated that. And what you have tonight, and I just happened to be at that steering committee meeting, and what you have presented tonight appears or does, uh, present what the majority of that steering committee appeared to be in support of. Is that a fair assessment?
I would agree with that.
And I think you've done a good job with it. And I would also commend Mr. Kirk, who was in that meeting and made some very, very good suggestions. And step forward to say, hey, I'll contribute any way my department can to help see everything happens and the costs are lowered. Uh, so I'll come in and like I said, he made some excellent suggestions and the chief was there to keep law and order. And he did a good job. So at this time, if you're ready for a motion, if none of my colleagues have anything else to say, I'll make a motion. Any more comments before Mr. Perry's motion?
Is there an estimated time, like how many minutes or?
For construction or for starting construction, just overall what you're, what we're looking at. So we have, we have talked to the Little League. One of our biggest impediments to that was could we impact their season? Um, we, we have talked with them about making accommodations. They will be able to continue to, to use the Lewis Community Foundation field during this process, but we are going to go ahead and do the renovations this summer, uh, on the other two fields, so that we're not waiting for baseball season to be complete. So, uh, basically what we're, we're doing, so long as we're authorized and move forward tonight, we're trying to get final plans and, and everything bid out in April so that construction can start by May. Um, it's, as, as I explained to Tyler, you know, there's a hundred million things that could happen between now and then, um, such as not getting any bids. Now, the way we're gonna approach this, we're gonna make sure people know about it. We're going to, you know, try to recruit contractors to bid the project. We're hopeful that we'll get some in the door, but this is, this is a small project in, in terms of, of construction. So, um, we're, we're hopeful we'll get plenty of bids and, and that, you know, not just one or two, but that's, that's ultimately a concern that could cause some delays. But we're trying to do everything we can to get this started this summer and this is not a project that will take probably more than four or five months once they break ground.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's great.
Sorry, excluding the skate park, which will, which will be more of a spring next year installation timeframe.
Thank you.
And I apologize that I failed to say, type Mr. Bragg contributed significantly too. And I would ask that those comments be entered, entered into the minutes, not for any self-gratification. So that these folks can share it with their grandchildren when this all comes to fruition. And the only other thing I'd ask is that when we finish, we enlarge that sign down there that it's named after. So, uh, in, I understand. So at this time, I would move that the monies be authorized at the two, at the amount of one-point-seven million dollars for phase one to include monies for, from sidewalks, to include money for drainage and monies out of the parked paving account to do some paving. I would also ask that the county, part of this mo- motion would authorize and permit, uh, Mr. Kirk in cooperation with Thrasher, uh, to proceed on the city's behalf to remove some fences and so forth that he may be able to do that you all mutually agree to. Uh, and dispose according to what he deems feels is appropriate on behalf of the city.
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six of five saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six-zero. Sam, I have one other question and one last comment. You didn't bring the pizza rolls.
You did a great job saying things.
You know, you're gonna call them pizza rolls. I'm gonna bring you tatinos and not the pepperoni rolls that you really want.
The only other thing, but, and I don't think we received it, Ron, to clarify this. I had asked that we get a timetable on the fire station.
Okay.
Was that, was that made available or it was, was it asked for?
Maybe. Tim, I know they're, they're going to bid in.
Uh, and I'm not asking, so if that has not made available, you don't feel comf- and you don't feel and you don't feel comfortable?
It's, it's certainly not best for me to answer, but I can find that out and report that back to Nevada.
Provided, just timetable, you know, ten of time table on the fire station.
Sure.
Also, in that, I think in this, this whole thing, we needed approval for me to enter into a con- a contract or an agreement with Thrasher to finish the work or to do.
Okay, I'll amend his emotion, his motion that we allow the city manager to go into contract with Thrasher for the city park project.
I'll second amendment. Man, we already voted on that one?
We voted on the first, make it separate.
I mean, is this gonna be a second, this be a different motion?
To do to make it easier.
It would be a second motion.
Because that'd be a second motion. You are voting on the first one. See, I guess you can't amend what we've already voted on.
If I rescind the motion.
You can rescind the motion?
No.
No, it's a second.
I'll second.
A second motion then, what's it? Okay, what's the second motion?
To allow the city manager to go into contract with Thrasher for the city park project.
Now is there a second to that? Second, properly moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six of five saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six-zero. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Now we move to consideration to adopt an ordinance to add the deputy chief position to the Oak Hill Police Department's second reading.
I make a motion that we, uh, allow the chief to add a deputy chief position for the police department.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six of five saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six-zero.
Chief Wiseman, did you have something to add to that?
Did. Thank you, council, for adopting that ordinance. And with that being said, I'd like to appoint the first deputy chief for the Oak Hill Police Department, Lieutenant Shannon Prince. And give him his caller. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that a picture be done before or after meeting with the, uh, chief and the new deputy chief versus the chief.
Be good.
If, if we can do a match at the meeting, we'll have another.
Good, okay. Just trying to make, I mean, on the people who are here.
Are you gonna spink on the promotions?
I am. I thought I was hoping I was done.
Well. I, I'll, I'll read that for chief. Um, a consideration to approve the Civil Service Commission's recommendation to promote the following qualifying officers. Sergeant Christopher A. Young to the rank of lieutenant, Sergeant James R. Pack to the rank of lieutenant, and Corporal Joshua A. Jones to the rank of sergeant.
Yes, with last month, you all, uh, approved to add slots to the civil service position. The, these are the slots that need to be filled with the officers that have achieved that, uh, promotion.
I move that we approve consideration to approve the Civil Service Commission's recommendation to promote the follow-up, the following qualifying fi- qualifying officer. Sergeant Christopher A. Young to the rank lieutenant, Sergeant James R. Pack to the rank lieutenant, Corporal Joshua A. Jones to the rank of sergeant.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded, that the Civil Service Commission's recommendation to promote the following qualifying officers, Christopher A. Young, James R. Pack, and Joshua A. Jones. Any discussion? There was a motion to second, I think, wasn't there? Just to make sure. We'll vote the motion. All those in favor, six of five saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six-zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Young, lieutenant is working, uh, lieutenant Pack is in class, uh, out of state. But Sergeant Jones is here and he can come up and get his caller.
Mayor, again, I'd ask the clerk make an editorial that this was done at the suggestion approval of the chief, who I would commend with the intent to allow for mobility within the department, which it's achieved your objective, chief, I think.
Yes, thank you. And could we go ahead and break this a minute, take pictures, because I don't think.
Sure. I'm all right.
Francis finally wants to, they, they gotta get home, they gotta get their studies done.
Eight-minute break.
Thank you.
She might be beside her.
Let me, let me look. I'm, I'm very close.
She was standing in front of me.
Yeah, she's back.
Been waiting on you, Jamie.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I do.
Yeah, thank.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, pal. All right, so everybody knew.
Thanks, pal. Appreciate you.
We're back in session from the short recess, which brings us to number three. Consideration of second reading and action upon an ordinance entitled, ordinance authorizing the financing of additional costs of the certain additions, betterments, and improvements to the sewerage system of the city of Oak Hill through the acceptance by the city of funding assistance in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $500,000 through the West Virginia Clean Water SRF Program, authorizing execution and delivery of all documents relating to acceptance of such funding assistance and providing for the approval of the Funding Assistance Agreement relating to such funding assistance. And this is just the title?
And Mr. Seacrest is on Zoom if anyone has any questions for him.
Any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with this. A motion made to accept this second reading and action upon the ordinance entitled, which I'm not going to read again. Is there properly moved and seconded? Any, any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six, five, saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to. Six, zero. Which moves us to number four. Consideration to abandon or submit the proposed charter amendment, section six, seven, nine, ten, ten, A, eleven, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, and thirty at the next municipal election.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Oh, wait, 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 wait. I'm sorry. This is, um, this item, I'm gonna ask for you to table because we have to wait 10 days and it has been 10 days from when we had our public hearing.
I move that we table consideration to abandon the charter, section six, seven, nine, until the April meeting.
Yes.
Properly moved and seconded that this, number four, be tabled until the April meeting of city council. Any more discussion about the, regarding this? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six, five, saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to. Six, zero. Which now moves us to new business. Consideration to approve the Bears and Brews Festival. Oh, but we're saving it to number 11, aren't we? Circle that one. Okay, number six. The general budget approval for FY 2023 to 2024. Madam manager?
Okay, that, um, the new budget after I made the corrections was in your pocket. Um, so I added the money for sales and I added, um, in case it gets approved, I went ahead and added the full-time enforcement officer. And I think that was the only thing that we hadn't added in there.
What is the total budget for next year?
Um, can you pull that up, Tyler? I can't remember right off.
Okay.
If you go to the one that has, um, the general fund revenues. It, yeah, it'll be all the way at the bottom. 4.5 million, 4,557,627 dollars.
Mayor, I move we approve the general budget for 2023 and 24 with the additions as is included.
Or second?
I'll say.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six, five, saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to. Six, zero. Number seven, consideration to employ a full-time enforcement officer. City manager?
Uh, this is for a co-enforcement officer to go along with the part-time officer that we have now and also to be, to start into some zoning. Just in anticipation of the zoning officer leaving. I think those two work together, so it'll work okay. For someone that we hire to be learning both things.
So if we make this motion, consideration to employ a full-time enforcement officer slash zoning officer?
Yes, you could do that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And properly moved and seconded that the city employ a full-time code enforcement officer slash zoning officer. Any discussion?
When are you planning to hire a full-time job for that?
Well, um, it's in the budget for July 1st. So I can try to accomplish that by then. It usually takes a while though to, once you post it out on the various sites and to get all the applications back and interview.
So is the idea that the two people that are doing the jobs now are going to kind of train that person until?
Well, yes, that they would, but I don't think. I think Gary is eventually going to retire. I just want to be prepared for that. And, and he can also do some things maybe that Gary is not doing right now. And then that will leave someone there when Bill Light is gone also.
So this gives them an opportunity to train.
Yes, yes.
How long will this job be posted?
Um, usually I'll do a couple of weeks, like once, once for two weeks or maybe, I'll put it in the Beckley paper and the Fat Tribune. And then we'll put it also, it goes on monster.com if you put it in the Beckley paper. And then I'll probably reach out to some other ways of advertising.
If we're talking 10 days, it will be posted?
Well, I won't, I won't run an advertisement for 10 days. But I'll probably give about three weeks for someone to return, for the resumes to be returned.
Three weeks?
It's very expensive to run those ads.
Three weeks from the closing of the advertise?
Yes. Usually it's what? Something like that, two or three weeks. I don't know. I, I just have to look at the calendar.
You know, I. I, I would suggest you advertise it once because of the cost. Put it on the website, uh, contact the colleges and universities. They'll do it in their, their departments or company. And, um, also, you know, I would hope that this hire would be done, as you said, prior to July 1st, that the person could come on board July 1st in advance. The other thing is, and you. And as I said, I hear you say, you know, full-time plus the two half times and then the two half times are in the budget. My understanding, uh, based on some comments by our attorney, that this will enable us to do some of the things with a code, with the ordinance that we already have that we felt like we couldn't do. And that would cover what was recommended by a citizen who had discovered additional statute. And, and then thirdly, that it could possibly save the city money and gain money in terms of we would no longer, and this is quite, not a question that has to be answered tonight, the thought that we no longer have to yield our fees to the county, to Mr. Ballard.
That's what I would like to accomplish. I know there's some kind of, um, there's some kind of testing that you have to go through to be able to do that.
Perfect, perfect. And I just thank my colleagues that we've got to that point three meetings later.
Oh, well, I can vote against it if you want. No. You want to do it one more time? Any more discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All those in favor, six, five, saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six, zero. Which brings us to number eight, Charter Ordinance Review Committee's recommendation to amend the charter, section eight, city elections.
This was an ordinance that was not presented with the original, um, ordinances or the original charter because we had a question about the timing and the three-year term. So this is the actual ordinance to move the elections with the county or the recommended changes.
Is the, is this the first reading or?
This will be the first reading.
All right.
And then not at our regular council meeting, but at the meeting where, where we lay the levy on, uh, April 18th, is that what it was? We will have the public hearing for this charter amendment. So we've already received one objection, so to this, yes. And so I'm sure we'll have an objection. And then at the next, at the meeting in May is when they can vote to put it on the ballot or abandon. Is that correct?
Yep, there'll be enough days.
Yes.
So will this be the three-year or?
Yes, this is the, just the three-year term for just this election. And then the election will move in 2026 to the primary county election and it would be held in conjunction with the county. Also, this, there's a bill now, I don't, I'm not sure the status of it, that, uh, the legislature is asking, I mean, they are wanting to mandate that this happen. So I think eventually it's going to be mandated.
Mandated.
That go, that every municipality has to go with county.
That come out of the Secretary of State's office? Do you know if that's a?
They, um, I don't know where it came from. I'm sorry. No.
Let me ask.
Would this also change some of the committees? If they're determined of counsel?
Oh, yes, we'd have to change that.
So let me ask this. If by some chance there were other suggested or proposed amendments to the chart, to the ones that we've gone over, we would have to have have to have that presented at, at another meeting, a regular council meeting?
Well, yes, we need it to put it on the agenda to start with. Like it could be, they, it could be brought up on future agenda items and then we could have it on our next agenda.
So my question is, if that would occur, then is, is there, will, is there time to put, to adopt it? To read it, to have the public hearing and come back?
I believe it would be.
We would just have to make sure that when we advertise for the April 21st.
But that motion could not advance tonight. Since we're, it would appear it might be germane and the chair could rule it germane or counsel and we could do it tonight.
I wouldn't recommend that.
Thank you. That's all I had to hear. That's all I had to hear. Why you making the big bucks, counselor? What's that?
I tell you, he'd probably like to see those big bucks.
Is there a motion? Yes, sir.
Since this also affects some committee.
Yes, sir.
Some of those orders changing well.
Those are not in the charter.
They're no orders. I move that we accept the Charter Ordinance Review Committee's recommendation to amend the ordinances as per A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I.
Wait, we're on number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight. All right. Sorry about that. Jumping the gun because the bottom is going to be removed, right?
All right.
Yep, just trying to move things along so Diane can go home and watch TV.
Are you making a motion for number eight, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving second in discussion. Hearing now we vote the motion, all is in favor, same type saying ah. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, six zero, which now brings us to number nine. Charter ordinance review committees recommendation to amend ordinances and Mr. Perry, you've already noted A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I.
Yes.
And um, I'll just briefly go through them. A is the Oak Hill Municipal Code two point oh four, the mayor. Uh, the Oak Hill Municipal Code two point oh eight point one oh, copy and research fees. C Oak Hill Municipal Code two point one oh, point oh one oh, competitive bids required for construction of facilities, publication of solicitation for sealed bids. D, the Oak Hill Municipal Code two point one four, point oh one oh, police commissioner and duties. E, Oak Hill Municipal Code two point two oh, point one oh, recreation committee. F, Oak Hill Municipal Code two point two oh, point oh two oh, beautification commission. G, the Oak Hill Municipal Code two point two oh, point three oh, municipal commission, museum commission. H, the Oak Hill Municipal Code two point two oh, point oh five oh, amphitheater commission. And I O H, the Oak Hill Municipal Code two point two oh, point seven oh, white oak trail, the white oak rail trail committee.
I move as the mayor's presented and the city manager has recommended.
Probably move their second. I'll second. Probably moving second in discussion. Hearing now we vote the motion, all is in favor, same type saying ah. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to, six zero, which brings us to number ten. The structural inspection board recommendation to demolish the structure located at sixteen fourteen Main Street, map twelve parcel three one three, owned by Timothy E. Sheeler Senior.
Also ask that this be tabled. Uh, Mr. Sheeler has not been served.
I'll make a motion that we table number ten. I'll second.
Probably moving second, we table number ten. Any discussion? Hearing now we vote the motion, all is in favor, same type saying ah. Those opposed, no. The, the motions agreed to, six zero, which now moves us to number eleven and number five.
I believe the, the, don't these have to be taken individually, Mayor?
I just, s- someone has asked that they be put together. I don't know. To the bottom.
I'd like to request that we go ahead with number five.
All right. Number five. Yes. No, I hear any objection. Number five, consideration to approve the Bears and Brews Festival and the serving of alcohol and wine on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three from four to ten P M.
I would like to abstain from voting on this issue.
Mr. Smallwood?
Due to the possibility of my band being engaged in this activity.
All right. So it could be, it could be a conflict of interest. All right.
How y'all doing? I'm Harley Volksen. I'm the president of the Black Bear Chapter of the Punisher's Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club. And I'm standing before you to request permission from the city to put on this event on July twenty-second from four P M to ten P M. Anybody have any questions in regards to this event?
I think we did this last year, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Chief, have we had any issues with this event?
Do they have limits on like how many drinks they can have?
Absolutely. Yes, it's, it's very, it's strictly monitored. That's part of the uh, permitting process is to, so that you can govern that. That's why we haven't had any problems in the past.
That's a ticket.
It's a ticket and a wristband. One person checks the IDs and one person only throughout the entire event. Uh, and that same person sells the tickets. They monitor and uh, we don't swap out, you know, volunteers at the booths.
Question. Who has the uh, permit, the special use permit?
The Punisher's Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club. We will have the permit.
And the cost of it is?
Five hundred? Yeah, five hundred.
And the area that's designated for the?
The area designated to be from uh, Jones Avenue to Central Avenue, just the same as last year. And Kelly.
And that has booths. I didn't go to so much of mine. I wouldn't, I didn't think that then.
Correct, yes. We, we set up booths. Uh, we sell spots for people to participate and, and set up the booths. Uh, we also uh, go down to uh, all of the business owners and they are offered an opportunity to participate as well. Some, some take advantage, some decline. Uh, last year, you know, the weather kind of beat us up pretty good on that with eighty percent chance of rain. And it actually didn't rain till seven o'clock that night. It only rained for fifteen minutes.
Is there a booth fee?
Uh, not for the business owners designated in that area, but for everybody else, it's what, thirty, thirty-five?
And the permits obtained under your organization?
Correct.
The business owners from Joan, did you say central to?
From Jones to Central.
Have been contacted.
They will be contacted once we've been granted permission.
I mean, I just wondered they, they don't see it as, some of them sometimes it indicated the impede, parking and impede. You know, I've heard that from some business owners. Pardon? I understand that. That's what I'm saying. You can't go to the business and park in front. And I've heard from, like, their parking lot has been closed down in the past.
Correct.
Not necessarily from Jones to Central, but I'm just saying.
Well, it's, I mean, it.
You got no opposition or feedback negative from the owners, from the business.
I haven't, I haven't personally in the past. I mean, I've, I've seen.
Who's just along that route.
I've seen some, some heartburn mainly because of, you know, vendors not showing up. I can't control that.
Right.
All I can do is sell, sell the spaces and then, and hope they show up. And if they don't, but I.
All I'm asking about is the existing businesses.
Yes.
Not too many along there.
Yeah, I mean, I, but Cafe One Ten, like, they could roll out the pig smoker. You know, I mean, that, there's, there's endless opportunities.
Can they drink all along in that whole area or is there just a certain?
In that area that's blocked off.
So from Jones to Central and down Kelly?
Correct.
Anywhere in that area?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
A B C signed off on that?
Yes.
Their local inspector?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve the Bears and Brews Event Festival on July twenty-second from four to ten P M.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Probably moving second. Any more discussion? Hearing now we vote the motion, all is in favor, same type saying ah. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to, five zero, and there, and the minute should reflect uh, um, Ms. Falk that uh, Councilman uh, Smallwood did not vote because it may be a conflict.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Harley.
Now, number eleven. Consideration requests from the amphitheater commission to serve alcohol at Groovin' in the Hills event. And I think Mr. uh, Williams is going to speak to that.
Mayor, I would have to abstain from this one also.
All right.
I didn't get to hear uh, John Garvin speak for three minutes. So I had put a post up on Facebook. We had an amphitheater committee meeting, I think, week before last and um, asking for ideas because I, I feel like the amphitheater is just underused basically. And um, of course, about fifty people commented and messaged me personally, and I think three, three people showed up with ideas. And this just happens to be one of those ideas, um, Groovin' in the Hills. That's, I'll give Allison the credit for that name. And I guess the main thing we're here for is asking about alcohol because I think we're, it, it's my understanding that we have the amphitheater committee itself can decide what events are taking place.
Yes.
So the idea is uh, for, for Fridays, or Saturdays, for Saturdays, um, June through September, we're going to have like two bands per night, um, vendors, food vendors, uh, hopefully arts, craft type thing. And that, we, we all agreed on that. And um, I think the main thing that, like I said, we're, we're asking is an out, just to be able to serve alcohol. And I mean, I think Harley described similarly what, what we're trying to do. I think in my mind, the, the gated area was going to be a little smaller than that. But that was one of the things I was told we had to, you know, have a gated area. Um, you know, the ticketing, it's kind of uh, our idea was to have the actual vendors, um, ID people and, and control that. Um, I talked to the A B C. Their main thing was, you know, that there was security, which I'm assuming the police, you know, there would be a police presence there. And I was also told that the city itself would be the ones that needed to get the permit. But if it was on city property, the city would, you know, which the amphitheater committee is part of the city. So, you know, that process was, we would need, you know, someone to fill out the application, um, fingerprint and then show the area that we would, you know, we would have gated off um, to the, I guess that would be Gant, Montgomery, our, our local person. So, I don't know. Is that everything? Two fifty, yeah, that, I was told the, the license fee would be two fifty per event, so that would be for, for events. So basically the city would be, would have to fill that out. We would need a letter of approval, which obviously if you're, you know, giving us approval tonight, that would be, you know, I guess we would still need the letter. And then we have to show where, where we were going to have gated off and, you know, explain how we were I guess ticketing the, which we, we're, we're open to, I mean, I think that's the, the ticketing idea, maybe, maybe better. I, I talked to Gant about the best way to, you know, actually sell the alcohol. And he, he kind of suggested that we talk to the vendors themselves because they do events like this. And we could ticket or allow the vendors themselves to um, handle, handle that. So. Any questions?
That was a question.
Of course you do. I knew, I knew.
Now, just, I mean, to, so it can be more of a family affair if they're not drinking wildly, but if they did the tickets and did all that. I'm sorry, John.
Here, we've indicated we should refrain from identifying personally until the council gives us the our, to our counselor clarifies what uh, the gentleman from the city's spoken is, so, you know, I'd ask that we honor that at this point.
So what was the question? Are we allowing John Garvin?
I guess I have to read.
What was that?
I'll have to wait. Okay, in general. I mean, tickets, I mean, because I haven't been to an event like that, so I don't know how that works. I mean, they're only sold so many tickets. I mean, how do you?
Again, I'm so like, um, the, the local enforcement officer, he, he said that the, to make this plan with the actual vendors, you know. But I, I would, I would assume they would know how to, you know, you don't over-serve basically. I mean, that's their job. They, they probably do other events like this.
And that pad on here uh, is a city then liable if something happens, I guess? We're just discussing the.
And, and I was telling.
The liability of everything.
About the actual, the, the permit itself. Um, I mean, it's my understanding, talking to the lady at the A B C in Charleston, that the property owner is liable anyway, you know, whether the, whether it's the, whether they're the license holder or, you know, you're having the property there. So I may have misunderstood.
Our, our insurance agent said that with the event like the Bears and Brews, that we become, we're secondary to that and that doesn't usually.
We carry our own insurance policy.
That person usually gets removed, yeah, because they have their own policy. So the city normally would get removed from anything that would happen. It would be on the insurance policy of the event, of the permit holder.
I think it's a great idea to utilize amphitheater and have bands there. So will this still take place if the alcohol is not allowed?
I mean, yeah, it can definitely go on without, without alcohol. I think it, it was just kind of brought up. I know it's kind of weird that I was thrown in here to represent, um, you know, selling alcohol at the amphitheater, but um, I think it just, it seems like we're trying to attract, uh, when I say young people, I'm not talking about underage young people. I'm just, I'm talking about, you know, a, a crowd, we're trying to do something different. And again, when I talk to not only Gant, but the lady in Charleston, this is, this sounds like something that cities do all the time. This was, this was nothing that either of them were worried about. Um, it was even brought up that the city of Beckley, you know, they have their own um, beer and wine license. I mean, it's at the, the, the country club that they bought. But um, so it's not, it's not unheard of for events like this. I mean, it's co, I would say it's common, almost. Don't quote me.
So other cities do this like at the amphitheater? Is that what you're saying?
That was the impression I got. This is something that, that uh, other cities do on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions you've expected, Don. You, it's my understanding in having talked to, by accident, Sunday, the liquor inspector, that if you do the amphitheater, then it has to be done enclosed.
Well, I think that's what we were talking about, gating off.
No, that's, that's different.
How's that? I don't think that's.
Okay, well, then let me make, let me suggest this, that we, that you, that you block off like.
Well, my idea was, uh, I didn't realize that it went all the way to um, Central, but in my mind, it was Kelly Avenue and the, you know, the amphitheater area.
So I'm not blocking off Main.
You're talking about yourself. What you're asking, the, the, the theater group. I mean, I was going to suggest you back off Alumina Lane.
Well, that was the main part in my mind. That's, I would, I don't know why you would back off.
Because block off.
Oh, block off. I wa, I thought you were saying to back.
I did say block, block. And I understand with that difference, all you'd have to do is fence, rope is questionable off that area to do what these guys do. Check them in, pick it, bracelet, so. But I mean, I understood, I understood that if it involved the theater, it would have to be, it would have to be an enclosure, which didn't mean offense.
Well, I'm confused by what you said. So, so for the bear and brews, you can't go to the.
No, we're talking about you. Well, I never talked about the amphitheater. They are doing it, they've blocked off the street.
Right.
Which makes it okay. Now, if you, if you was amphitheater, then it has to be enclosed. So I'm just suggesting that as you consider this, or as we approve it, that your area for distribution and consumption would be Alumina Lane. Just as they said, from, from Jones to Central, from Jones to Central. Yeah, that's why I'm saying, and in this case, you don't purchase in the area roped off.
When you're saying purchase or consume.
You have, I understand you have to consume it in that area also. And, and again, maybe we need an A B C guy here, but in conversation with him, accidentally, that's what I was told.
Do you guys have vendors that you have contacted that sell beer and wine? Like how big? Because I know we do samples. So how much alcohol are we talking about these trucks serving?
This is all, um, I guess how we were trying to find out what was allowed. I don't know.
Ones that we are going to contact, our free vote, of course, the local breweries around here.
Oh, I see. I just didn't know if there was like food. I've no, I've heard of a liquor truck that's out now.
It'll be, it'll be one of our local breweries that we contact and invite.
Okay, so we don't know how big they're going to be serving.
I was also led to believe that perhaps the amphitheater committee could apply for the special permit versus the city. And that perhaps if the city did, which we paid for, I guess.
I was going to take the money from the amphitheater.
Okay, well, well, that's city mu, budget money, right?
Yeah, but they raised it, so.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'm just. Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'm just, these are things that
Yeah, we have questions too. We want to make sure that this is a family friendly event. You know, we don't want anybody going off the rails involving problems and stuff like that. So we want to keep it as safe as possible so that people keep returning.
If the council takes this up and if the council approves it, I would suggest and ask and request and beg and plead, whatever actually fits the bill, that you definitely talk with, which you've already done. Get it clear in writing and talk to these guys who've done it and kind of follow their pattern or protocol since they appear to have been a success and endorsement please. Uh, you know, and certainly I would presume that the chief would provide, as he's done in the past, to the event and suggest, like I said, you consider Alumina Lane where you're roped off area. Because I think there's a, there's a question about enclosure versus roped off.
So regardless of alcohol is approved, you guys are going to move forward with the bands and the weekends and stuff?
If it's not approved.
I would really like to see how much the beer vendors, what amountage they will be selling to people. So if they're, you know, I know I don't drink beer, but I know they have several different sizes.
Whether it's the same ticketing, same exact process that the beers and brews are going or a, I mean, I don't know, a ten ounce cup, eight ounce cup.
Don, let me ask this. If this were taken up at the next council meeting, would that set you behind or would that allow you time to come back with a more?
More information.
More information to find.
Because the bands, I think, are a great idea. We should, you should definitely move forward with that. But I think we need to know more about how much people are going to be able to consume.
When is the next meeting?
Again, I just.
April, June.
Would that throw you behind?
Um, I mean, I don't know. I think we're behind.
The license.
No, I think we listen to the female.
You know, Sam plays the very end of Juke. I mean, so we still have some time to contact those people and get back with.
Just like, here's the logistics a little bit clearer.
Yeah.
Here's, here's my thing. And, and I'm not saying either way, but um, I'm, I'm for this one because, I mean, and the other thing would be the, the, he has the same process. I mean, what's his process? Because we did that. I think we need to get his process too, maybe with him. Okay, because I, because we didn't ask him the same questions we're asking him. That's what I'm saying. Like, so my question would be, are you asking us for like approval and then and then you come up with a plan? I mean, I mean, I guess what I'm saying, like, are you just coming here for approval so you can move forward?
This is also a little different because they're a nonprofit, I guess.
Right. They're a whole, they're a nonprofit agency, right?
It's my understanding that the, that since the amphitheater committee is part of the city, you know, we're, we're just a.
We're non, I mean, we're nonprofit. The city's nonprofit.
Right. Okay. Well, that's the, that, I don't know. That, that was kind of the gray area. Even the lady at the ABC was kind of talking about.
Yeah.
Can the city produce nonprofit um, form? Which again, I mean, I still, I guess still the question is, I guess this is, the question still is like, the main thing I'm assuming is the liability. Like, is the liability going to totally come back on the city? Just for, because what I'm asking is the city would be, you know, asking for the permit.
Right.
Whereas they're getting their own.
Is there any, we'd have to add that to our coverage. Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and I will say, this, this is kind of thrown together. I mean, that, um, you know, I, I drive by the amphitheater, okay, and you all know, I've talked about this for years. We don't, we need to do more at the amphitheater. I think it's been underused probably since it was built. And um, like I said, I, I made a Facebook post and, and I got a lot of suggestions and I got like three people that showed up with ideas, you know, so. So this is kind of a, and it seemed like a, a good idea um, to, you know, have a monthly, a monthly concert. And again, this, we could move on without, without alcohol. I mean, that's.
I would like.
I'm trying to, I'm thinking how we can draw more people.
Right. I agree with you. If it's okay, I'd like to table this um, until next month where we can find out some more information about how much alcohol will be served and all that. Because we have more information to go off of. I think the bands are an awesome idea.
You know, we could model what we're doing a lot after, you know, the things that have already been done.
I just want to create more foot traffic.
I agree. Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Tap into forest industry. It's going to be the heat of the season for us. And people get off the river or whatever they're willing to come here, a lot of the out of town forests, it's something for them to come and do.
So, you know, you said, I think, and I don't want to put work, that this would not throw you behind, that you still could facilitate your June schedule.
Yeah, it's just a matter of me reaching out to what breweries are available and interested.
So I would sec, I would second Krista's motion. We work together.
Take a picture.
What made you think we don't?
Just so we can have.
The law then, come big daddy.
Like, the whole purpose behind this is to be something positive, Kim.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Right.
And you don't want somebody showing up.
Getting out of line.
Getting out of line and a bad facing people.
Right, exactly, exactly.
You know, this is kind of thrown together. Like I said, this was a this is two weeks old. And, and you know, I've suggested to the other members of the committee that maybe get on some ideas for the amphitheater this time for next year. You know what I mean? So we're not, we're not behind on it.
Mayor, again, I would, I would uh, second Krista's motion that it be tabled and put on the April, January, April.
April tenth.
April tenth agenda. And at such time, uh, Don, come back with the specifics of the questions that have been raised here this afternoon. And as Taz has said, that's not saying for or against. It's just, I think it's prudent that we.
No, I just don't want to. Bring them back to the meeting and say, we're not for it. It's what I'm saying.
No.
We're not saying that. All's been said, we like additional information like these guys have presented.
They got a good plan.
A plan, a plan. And.
Again, we can model plan, you know.
Bring it back.
Kind of what I'm thinking.
Talk, talk with them, talk with Gant and be sure we've crossed her exit. So I'll move the previous question.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote the motion. All those in favor, six five by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Um, Mr. Smallwood, you didn't vote in that one, did you? So five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department reports, these reports have already been sent to you. Are there any questions for the police department? Fire department. City manager. Beautification commission. The code enforcement. And MS four.
I have something for that one. And also, um, I placed before you the economic development report. Uh, for MS four, I just want to read a part out of our code. That said, it's seven point oh two point oh five oh. No person shall discharge or cause to be discharged any storm waters, surface water, groundwater, roof runoff, subsurface drainage, uncontaminated cooling water, or unpolluted industrial processed waters to any sanitary sewer. So if your storm drains are into the sewer, please remove them.
That was so polite.
Uh, I also have an announcement. Tomorrow night at, from six until eight at the, the former country club, it's now the city limits bar and grill. We will have a community event for our hubcap program kickoff. And we would like for all of you to be there. Everybody that, we're trying to get volunteers for the community. We've talked about several times tonight, events that we're having. We need volunteers. Um, this will be a fun event. It'll be, we'll have some speakers. We're going to have a mini carnival. So we'll have some, some clowns, more clowns that are than, that are here tonight. So we would, we, I send more clowns. And we're only having one, so that's good. Um, so we would like to invite you all to come to that event.
Six to eight.
From six to eight. And it's in the upstairs, the ballroom upstairs, not in the bar downstairs.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
That is all that I have.
All right. Council comments, Ward one.
Um, Mr. Kirk, are they going to be in any like spring, like they can put their limbs out to the side or?
Off to the park.
Off to the car. So the little old ladies, they go.
Jamie Walker drives around every day.
He does.
Ah, thank you.
I do have several litter sweeps that I'm planning for the month of April. I'm waiting to hear from my truck and trailer guy what days he's available. So I will let the city know when those, and we'll post them. But there should be three, two definitely, maybe three litter sweeps in the month of April.
I'm going to have a sign up sheet for that also tomorrow night.
I'll be right on top of that, Mr. Kirk.
The day report center cleaned Menden Hill about two weeks ago.
I'm going to put you in charge of that.
No, they never picked up anything.
What?
No, but the day report center did pick up wide of it.
You want to contact them, Steve? That would be very appreciated. Planning a litter sweep is like a minor military operation. That's all I have.
Hey.
One, one comment question. Uh, were we able to get in touch with the municipal lady to get them to send out that request that any cities or councilman that would like to contribute to Mr. Oxley?
No, Kim has had some issues with her mom, so I'll, I will reach out to her.
If somebody else could, I mean, I think. Well, yeah. The other thing is, the house to the left, where the, uh, not where the sport used to be down there, the wind has blew out and all that. Is there any plan to, for the inspection board to look at that and raise that thing or have it raised?
Which house is it?
Chief, help me out. You should know.
That's the one that was all in.
That's the one we just did? Yeah, okay, all right. So that, okay, got you. I was in the necessary room at that time.
The one at, the one in Menden?
Huh?
Always, oh, that's, okay. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's not the one I'm talking about.
You're talking about the one that, uh, Tom fired out on.
Yes. Victory Street, yes.
Okay, we can look at that.
Yes, that's one. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't mess up.
All right, Ward two.
Mr. Hayes look, I have a couple items, Mayor. Um, tomato, the burnt trailer up on Crestview.
Yes.
Call them a trailer park. It's, there's still a pile of stuff there. Piece of metal laying out near the road. I haven't, I've been up for a couple of times. I haven't seen much activity on it.
Okay.
Um, may mention that to Bill. And um, uh, progress report on the deeds for the Menden parks.
They are in Mr. File's office. Um, but there were some questions I had to answer. So I finished answering those today. So just as however long it takes. Mr. Salaji is not in town yet.
Still not back in the country.
Yeah, he's not even in the country, right?
Sure. Um, and I wanted to mention, um, the EPA has came out with their proposed um, remedy plan for the Schaefer site. They'll be in town on March twenty first at the Menden Community Center to present their um, proposed cleanup plan for um, public comment.
What time will they be there, Steve?
Six to eight, I believe is the time.
Thank you.
Now, where's that going to be? The Menden Community Center. Um, the Apostolic Church in there now. March twenty first, six to eight.
Anything else from Ward two? I just have uh, two comments. One, I had a um, person call me and ask, uh, has the city ever considered sponsoring community gardens? I know some towns do that. Has it ever been brought up?
We did have a community garden.
How'd it go?
Not did, it did not go.
But what, what, one of, I'm sorry. Some of the things about it.
Inanimate consent that Mr. Hannabast.
Objection. Go ahead. Go ahead.
The, the group that did the community garden made a rule that no one that worked in the garden and actually grew the vegetables, we, we had an area filed that they couldn't take it home for home consumption. They had to donate one hundred percent.
Oh, my gosh.
That didn't sit very well with uh, the people taking care of it, which they ended up not taking care of it. So, but I, I think under the right circumstances, it would be a good idea.
Yeah, we.
For the farmer's market pavilion in.
All right there. Could you look into that and see what possibilities there are, if there are any, and see, and have a report? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Tamika, I've actually been talking to State University. So if you want to just get with me after the meeting, okay.
Thank you. Um, and one last comment. Uh, the city of Oak Hill has been in the last few years having a special program in, for Black History Month in February. And uh, this year, I had a speaker I wanted and I tried to get him last year, but he's in the legislature. So he couldn't show up this year till, again, till March. So you will see, you'll see copies of this over there on the table on this coming Saturday. Uh, Larry Rowe, a member of the House of Delegates from Canal County, who's written a book entitled Virginia Slavery and King Salt in Booker T. Washington's Boyhood Home at Malden. He's going to be here with his, with his book and he's going to give us a, a program on Booker T. Washington, his, and his importance in, in the civil rights movement as well as his life at Malden. And I urge you, if you possibly could be here in this room at one o'clock on Saturday, uh, March eighteenth, uh, there will be a, a special presentation by Larry Rowe and about his book on the life of Booker T. Washington, which I understand he has a second volume coming out this year. This is volume one. And I, I, if you can buy a copy of his book if you want, I think he'll have those with him. On the front of the card is Booker T. Washington's life, who he was, what he did. And on the other side is Larry Rowe and the book. So if you want to show up, show support for, for, for black history and also to uh, learn something about Booker T. Washington and his connections to West Virginia, I would strongly urge you to be here on Saturday at one o'clock. That's all I have. The next city, yes, sir. Uh, the, any future agenda items? Hearing none. We, the next city council meeting will be April the tenth in this room at five thirty and with no other business.